Mr. Lyons.
We've got the big boy models tonight.
We like some of us have any questions.
Actually, I'm just trying to change.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons. Strange, very different view. Yeah. I told Sarah to do a chair pride.
While I'm back, I started listening where I said.
I remember.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Years of knowledge.
Oh, Mr. Lyons.
Show up in jeans and a t-shirt.
And there's Mr. Cooper. It was very bright there and it's very different here.
There's a seat. Got room?
Hi, Bruce.
Hello, Bruce.
Hey, Bruce.
Yeah, I remember this. It were a rocky one. I was, and there was only one over with me. Yeah?
Oh, it does look like it moves up there, but. I would say.
Nah, I'm good.
Alright, you got it.
Try not to mangle this. I just don't see the minute taker. You can sit down on me.
Good evening, every. Good evening, everybody. We're just gonna wait till our minute taker, who does not seem to be here right now, so we're just gonna wait a couple more minutes until they arrive. Once they do, we'll get started.
Five years as chair, I never had that once.
We're just gonna wait till our minute taker, who does not seem to be here right now, so we're just gonna wait a couple more minutes until they arrive. Once they do, we'll get started.
Five years as chair, I never had that once.
Good evening, every. Good evening, everybody. We're just gonna wait till our minute taker, who does not seem to be here right now, so we're just gonna wait a couple more minutes until they arrive. Once they do, we'll get started.
Five years as chair, I never had that once.
Despite the absence of our minute taker, we will have this on video, so we're going to proceed. We will start, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the God, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with stop spotlight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight's spotlight, before I start tonight's spotlight, I would just like to thank my colleague, Ms. Heidi Keys, who has shepherded this for so many years and is now passing the torch off to me. I want to just recognize her briefly for that effort and thank you for your guidance in taking this over. So there's one member on one group on tonight's spotlight. It's the Norwalk High School Marching Band, the U.S. Band's Group Six National Champions. The Norwalk Board of Education is proud to recognize the 2017 Norwalk High Marching Band for the completion of a highly successful fall marching season. Performing their show Relics, the band recently took first place in the U.S. Band's Group Six National Championships, the highest level of high school competition. The Norwalk Marching Band has a long tradition of excellence. This year was no exception. On November 11th, performing at the MetLife Stadium, the band scored a 97.775 out of a possible 100 points, winning its second national championship in four years. With more than 50 bands performing in the day-long event, the Bears outscored bands from New Jersey, Virginia, Arkansas, and Connecticut to capture the Class VI's Open Crown. Norwalk also earned additional awards for Best Music and Best Overall Effect. The national championship win capped an undefeated season for the band. In October, the Bears also captured both Connecticut State Championship and the New England States Championship. This high level of success represents a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication. The band's 175 student musicians and color guard members have been rehearsing and performing since August, beginning with two weeks of rigorous band camp before school even started. During the school year, students logged more than 20 hours of rehearsals a week. In addition to delivering award-winning performances, these highly committed students also demonstrate excellent academic performance. Over 90% of the NHS band members maintain a 3.0 GPA or better. The Board of Education is proud to honor the talented students who make up this year's Norwalk Marching Band, as well as Band Director Chris Rivera and his hard-working staff. We also offer our thanks to the many band parents, who we know spent countless hours supporting the marching band, both on and off the field. We congratulate you all on your achievements and wish you all the best for the upcoming indoor winter percussion and winter guard sessions. Thank you. With that announcement, we have a couple of individuals we would like to recognize individually for outstanding effort in this area, and the first on the list is Band Director Chris Rivera. Chris, would you please come up?
Wow, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Chris, amazing job. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Standing as usual. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Also, we would like to recognize Brass Captain Alec Parker. Woodwind Captain and Assistant Drum Major Ethan Smith. Our last recognized individual in attendance, Site Manager Samantha Perattelli. A few others I would just like to recognize that are not here in attendance. Percussion Captains Josh Richards and Ryan Whitney. And also Color Guard Captain Bianca Rendazza. And one more, Band Parent Ed Abrams. And last but not least, please, all you NHS Bears, please stand up.
We love Alan Lowe from the City's Facilities Department, but those claps weren't for you.
That ends tonight's spotlight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we will now move on to public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna be taking over for the public comments. Thank you, Mr. Barbas, for doing this for so many sessions here. We're gonna open up our public comments. Just as a reminder, for those of you that will be coming up here to speak, when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address. You will be limited to three minutes. At 30 seconds, when you have 30 seconds left, I will raise my hand to give you a notification, and when the three-minute time has come, I will once again let you know that your time has expired and to wrap it up. So with that, our first speaker for the evening is Joseph Giandurco. And again, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Giandurco, NFT Vice President. I live at, currently reside at Nine Mot Avenue. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I'd like to begin with a thank you to the previous members who are no longer here. Thank you for their service and dedication to the students of Norwalk. To the newly-elected and re-elected members, I say welcome. I stand before you as a representative of the teachers and of the community, as an advocate for my students and the teachers. I feel that we are facing an extremely exciting and challenging road ahead. Norwalk has made some major strides and continues to improve each day due to diligent work of its entire staff. However, we face some immense challenges. The district is facing several challenges stemming from a lack of communication and a negative perception. We face the challenge of repairing a special education department. Along with the repairing of a relationship with many special education parents who feel a sense of distrust and isolation, we face sick buildings across the district where air quality is low and students and teachers and other staff members are made to suffer. Middle school redesign continues to leave a lot of unresolved problems and issues in its wake as it transforms the district. We have mounting legal bills and issues which continue to drain valuable resources from our classrooms. The settled state budget does impact Norwalk to the negative, if only in a slight manner. We will be once again forced to make do with less. The Board faces strained relationships with its workforce. These issues haunt our great school district and impede its progress. As we move forward and progress, I encourage and remind you, and many of you, of your campaign promise to listen to the entire community, to build relationships and to strengthen our district. I extend my hand and offer to help this Board come together and build a consensus and work with everyone for the betterment of our students. Partnering with us will foster a relationship of collegiality rather than one of contempt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giandurco. Next on our public comments is Mike Mouschak. Again, if you can please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Mike Mouschak, 50 Elmwood Avenue. I don't have any kids in this school system, but I want to speak on a subject that is about public safety on school properties. And I appreciate taking a moment. I know you have a full agenda, and congratulations, by the way, for all the new members here. But this is something that, oh, I'm on the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. But I was also on the Zoning Commission for six years. This is pertinent to what I'm about to say, because every project that came forward to the Zoning Commission, we made sure that the lighting of the properties followed all of our regulations, meaning was indirect lighting, facing down. And I notice, and that's for safety reasons, because no one wants to be blinded by lights that are pointed up, and you can be blinded, actually, when you drive onto a lot of school properties, I would say almost every one, by very bright LED lights that they're installing, but they're being installed improperly and in some cases illegally, because they are facing off the property. But a lot of them are just pointed up, and they blind you as a driver so that you can't see pedestrians crossing sidewalks. And on a school property, obviously, that's a real important issue. They, when it rains, the light is reflected off. It's like shining bright headlights in your eyes. And I would just ask that facilities and whoever else is responsible, please take a little time, undo the bolts on the lights, point them all down so that they are not directed in anybody's eyes. This, again, prevents injuries, possibly even deaths, because you cannot see cars pulling in and out of parking spots. You can't see kids going to meet their parents. You can't see school buses. Certainly, this time of year, when it gets dark early, you can have a real problem. So a lot of the facilities are used at night, and this is a real issue. So the schools do need to follow regulations, as do private properties. So it's very important to me, and I think it's really important for our kids and for everyone who uses our school facilities, to have all these lights pointed down, and it's really become a real problem with the new lighting. I hate to see good money being spent badly, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mouschak. That ends our public comments section for the evening.
Okay. We will move on to the Superintendent's Report. Before we do that, I did just want to cite to welcome, we have five new board members that were elected. This is our first full board meeting with everyone board. We have new officers, and this is our first full board meeting with our new officers installed. So as we get up to speed, give us a little room to maneuver and get ourselves used to the positions that we're in, and just wanted to welcome everyone. So with that, let's move on to Superintendent's Report. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to take a moment to welcome our new board members here tonight for our first business meeting. We have two Superintendent Report items tonight, the first of which revolve around school governance councils, and secondly, we'll look at our residency office and the process for implementing our residency policy. Patty Foley, Director of School Improvement, will take us through the second portion of the Superintendent's Report and give you a full update on our residency data since the start of this school year. But before we do that, I wanted to talk about year two of school governance council policy rollout and implementation. So as most of you know, Ralph, this is not the one. So as Ralph does that, this is year two of the school governance council policy rollout. It was adopted, passed and adopted in the spring of 2016 school year, and was in place for the first round of elections and the first governance councils that operated in the 2016-2017 school year. This presentation tonight will really focus on three different areas. One, building school governance council capacity. Okay, I'm told it's a little slow, so we'll work with that. Second, policy revision work on that particular policy, school governance council, and then some future considerations for the Board to entertain. Boy, it's really slow, Ralph. Someone may have to stand at the laptop. Great. So you should have a hard copy in front of you. At the close of last school year, the Board held a forum with school governance council co-chairs. And at this forum, a comprehensive survey was conducted by our consultant group to give us a sense of how the school governance councils believed their trainings had, how they had experienced their trainings over the course of this year and how their governance councils had functioned as units. There were several board members in attendance for the forum, and there was a great deal of high-quality feedback that emerged from the conversation, and that helped to set in motion the design and the changes that we believed would be necessary for the 2017-2018 school governance council trainings and professional development. Again, as we did last year, we've relied on Leadership Greater Hartford and Rosario Associates as our consultant group to do the trainings. They have a lot of past experience working with SGCs and other boards in the Hartford County. In fact, worked with Superintendent Adamowski when he was in Hartford to help to build the school governance council model there. In the first year of implementation, the focus was primarily concentrated around how school governance councils learn the role of serving as governance councils, team-building, generating collaboration and consensus-driven decision-making. This took the form of two trainings in the 16-17 school year, as we had a collection of new schools and school governance councils that were really interacting for the first time around real decision-making. And as I said a moment earlier, at the end of the forum, when we had completed the full training module for the year, the governance council members left individual feedback forms. And what we were able to discern from those results were that governance council members were eager to move from training and professional development toward real action and having real decision-making authority. And they wanted to focus in a couple of specific core areas of school organizations. One was around designing and implementing school improvement plans. The second was around engagement, parent-student, and as a result, increasing school, improving school culture through wellness and health. And then finally, really sinking their teeth into student-based budgeting, which is a relatively new concept in Norwalk, and how student-based budgeting impacts school budgeting more generally. So as you all probably know, the current policy provides quite a bit of autonomy for school governance councils to impact their individual school budgets. And so those were the takeaways from year-one implementation training. And what the next slide provides is a comparative of where the trainings were in 16-17 and what we are really in the middle of doing at this point in 17-18. So per the policy, there is a constant turnover of school governance council members by design, in the same way we have the bicameral legislature at our federal level. And so we have a constant turning of new membership. Our first training was held with those new members at the start of the school year. Each had a chance to go through a session in which we did our best to condense most of what we talked about last year over the series of trainings for the year, to give them a flavor for what it would be like to be on a school governance council. What's it like to be on a council that represents a school that's making decisions about student learning, about budgeting, about facilities, and, you know, a wide range of school organizational issues? We thought that that was necessary so that we would not have rookie SGC members coming on, joining governance councils, and not understanding roles, responsibilities, and the content that they would be working with. So that happened, and we did that at, one session at CGS at Bryman-McMahon High School and the other at Norwalk High School. We ran independent sessions with the school district divided in two. And we've also had the opportunity at this point to hold a second set of sessions around school improvement planning. Again, we divided the district in two. I decided this year that we needed to have a bit more thought go into how we divided our schools, so we're doing it by feeder pattern this year. So you will see one side of town from elementary on up to Norwalk High School, a training inside Norwalk High School, and a second identical training happening with our second feeder pattern that runs up through Bryman-McMahon High School. So nine SGCs and one training, 10 in the other, all coming with a draft copy of a school improvement plan to give you a little bit of, I'll go into that in just a moment, but the school improvement plans were required last year for all of our Title I schools, which included six last year. And at the start of this 17-18 school year, in fact, in the spring, leading up to the 17-18 school year, we notified principals. issues? We thought that that was necessary so that we would not have rookie SGC members coming on, joining governance councils, and not understanding roles, responsibilities, and the content that they would be working with. So, that happened, and we did that at, one session at CGS at Bryan McMahon High School and the other at Norwalk High School. We ran independent sessions with the school district divided in two. And we've also had the opportunity at this point to hold a second set of sessions around school improvement planning. Again, we divided the district in two. I decided this year that we needed to have a bit more thought go into how we divided our schools, so we're doing it by feeder pattern this year. So, you will see one side of town from elementary on up to Norwalk High School, a training inside Norwalk High School, and a second identical training happening with our second feeder pattern that runs up through Bryan McMahon High School. So, nine SGCs and one training, ten in the other, all coming with a draft copy of a school improvement plan to give you a little bit of, I'll go into that in just a moment, but the school improvement plans were required last year for all of our Title I schools, which included six last year. And at the start of this 17-18 school year, in fact, in the spring, leading up to the 17-18 school year, we notified principals and school communities that all schools would be required to submit a school improvement plan. So, councils were busy developing drafts of these school improvement plans, many of which were going back and forth with Patty Foley, our Director of School Improvement, for advice and direction in terms of how you set priorities and goals and strategies. And I have a slide a little bit later tonight that will kind of diagnose what a school improvement plan looks like. Those SGCs have all submitted a school improvement plan. As of December 1st, every school has submitted to Patty Foley and I a completed draft school improvement plan. Patty and I will be going through these documents, sharing patterns and trends with the superintendent and the cabinet, and making any necessary adjustments that we believe are important in achieving our strategic operating plan. You'll see school culture building and school wellness, and then school budgeting. So, we have, we've completed two training modules. We have two training modules left in the year. The school culture building and wellness will happen late winter. School budgeting will happen in March and in April. In fact, on the next slide, you'll see the timeline here. The student-based budgeting date was decided after looking at input and feedback from members last year. One of the legitimate gripes that came out of governance councils was that they were oftentimes working with budget information that was dated or less relevant than they would have expected, and that was accurate. And that was because of how quickly a district of our size can move in terms of budget adjustments, unforeseen possibilities that come up in the springtime. And so, after speaking with Tom Hamilton, we thought it would be much better and more fruitful for governance councils to have at it as late in the season as possible. So, we have a plan going into that particular training where we're looking to achieve two objectives. One is to really get governance council individuals to understand student-based budgeting, how the formula works, the purpose behind it, why that drives the best school-based decision-making. And then second, both Tom Hamilton and Kristen Karsmit will take the governance councils through the process of looking at their individual student-based budget and talking through what are the most likely budget decisions that school governance councils ought to be delving into. There are some that are really outside of the scope or the control, given a myriad of issues like contracts and so forth, but there are some significant budget areas that we think governance councils will have a real say in come spring. So, if we turn to the school improvement sessions, they were really a joy to be a part of. I've gone to all of the trainings and had the opportunity to see both feeder-pattern SGCs interact with their co-chairs, their community members, their parents, and the trainers around their school improvement plans. And schools are in different places but are showing healthy signs that the team is willing to debate and put important pieces on the table. There was one example of a school that wasn't willing to get into the priorities of their individual improvement plan because they had yet to solidify their vision statement. And so, for that portion of the training, that team continued to work through the nuances of their vision statement because they felt like they needed to get that right before they could agree on three key priorities for their school. A second piece in addition to vision statements are theories of action, and current board members are, established board members know about this concept, and new board members may as well, but in our retreats over the past couple of years, the superintendent has talked a lot about theory of action planning. It's really built, it's designed within the strategic operating plan, and essentially it's an if-then statement. If we do these things, then it will result in this. And essentially, you test the statement as a hypothesis. You try and disqualify components of the then to tease out what you have to change in terms of the action plan. So, we had school governance councils actually, you know, speaking in this language, which was exciting. Each school improvement plan, as I said, has three school-wide priorities. We tried to emphasize the importance around having two learning indicators, and all schools that submitted plans have two learning indicators. I provided, these are actual examples, you just kind of copied from a couple of plans. One, improving tier-one instruction and literacy, and you've heard Craig Crowler and Janine Goss talk at length about the need now to move from tier-two intervention to focus our instructional core around tier-one and middling students. Many of our schools have built this into their school improvement plan, in literacy, math, or in some cases, both. A second example of a priority, implementing the 2020-20 math model to strengthen tier-one instruction. Now, within each priority, a school improvement plan consists of a goal, a goal to achieve, a goal that you can measure against, and these are two examples that I pulled. One school had a goal of having 60% of students in grade four or five meter exceed their projected growth target on the NWEA MAP assessment when comparing the fall assessment to the spring assessment. And then you can see below that SBAK, and increasing 10% of students scoring at proficiency or higher in the middle grades in math. Here's a look at the SGC cohorts. We have two, as I mentioned. We don't really need to spend much time on this. There were a couple of positive comments from members who appreciated being in the same room with other school governance councils where their kid would ultimately go. Having those administrators in the room, it formed a kind of an organic alignment, if you will. So, we turn the page, we've, you know, we are into the second year of this policy implementation, and it is always important to stop, reflect, and think about the ways in which you can improve an original policy. And there are some key areas in which we can do this, and we've actually been working with Shipman and Goodwin on, we have a red line. We're just awaiting the formation of the policy committee membership with this new board, and that will be one of our early tasks, is taking a look at the school governance council policy, talking about the challenges and the strengths and the challenges of the original policy, and strengthening it and improving it and bringing it through the process of a policy committee vote onto the full board for a more robust and clear policy. Some brief future considerations that I'd like the board to consider. In addition to a policy revision, it's going to be important to once again collect feedback from our school governance council members this second time around, and have that feedback drive more particularly what future professional development could look like. There are a lot of different ways that we can proceed here. We could include another year similar to the one that we're in the process of doing, which would be a standard lesson plan, if you will, at each of these sessions that the trainers come in and work on, or we could differentiate further and potentially have smaller trainings with smaller groups of SGCs that are working more specifically on particular areas where there's some commonality. There are some exciting possibilities, and we'll look forward to ongoing feedback and input. Central Office, I think, needs to continue and improve upon its support of SGCs. Last year during the budgeting season, Tom Hamilton and myself went to a number of different SGCs and spoke with those SGCs about the rollout of the student-based budget, unintended consequences of that rollout, and trying to improve for next year. Ultimately, at the end of the process, we found that most SGCs felt as though there was little room for decision-making, and we're hoping to improve that. That is not to say that the SGCs would have a carte blanche ability to develop a budget, but we do want the SGCs making key decisions that are directly related to the school improvement And as I said a moment ago, designing 2018-2019 school governance council professional development sessions, as a team, a central office team, we're thinking about that on a regular basis, and all of our interactions with parents, community members, and other SGC members are helping to inform what that might look like. Anybody have questions on SGCs?
Yes, the bottom bullet in page eight, could you clarify the distinction between councils created via statute versus via policy?
Sure.
And then the last sentence also.
So, this was something that Shipman and Goodwin Council brought to our attention as they were doing the red line, and that is, their recommendation was, we have a district school governance council policy, but there is also a state statute that outlines school governance council policies, and the State Department of Education can require individual schools to have a school governance council if they're underperforming. And so, what the Shipman and Goodwin attorney advised us was, in the other districts in which they worked, where there was a school that was considerably underperforming, to the extent that the state has intervened and required a school governance council be implemented, that we defer to the state school governance council policy. That was a recommendation from Shipman. It's going to be something that we're going to need to discuss in our policy committee. It's part of the red line version that Shipman provided to us. And there, essentially what they were guiding us on was that when you had a situation of a state intervention like, such is the case, is a school that's underperforming, you want to ensure that you are meeting each of the state's requirements for school governance councils. So, we would really have to do one of two things. Default to the state's policy as it concerns school governance councils, or look at our own policy and ensure that the state, everything that the state is providing in its policy, we have embedded in ours. So, we go in one of two directions. Defer to the state statute concerning school governance councils at underperforming schools, or build it into our own language.
I want to just clarify one thing, Bruce. If I recall, we created, our policy was copied exactly on state policy, we added one section, one bullet point, but isn't it not the same idea?
Yeah, when we designed it, we designed it to incorporate all of the state requirements. For instance, the composition of the school governance councils is mandated by the state at the six or seven schools in Norwalk that were state-required to have them. So, rather than having different ways of organizing the SGCs in different schools, we just took that state breakdown and applied it to all 19 schools even through our policy. So, you know, the thing that says seven parents, five teachers, that's straight out of the state statute. And we could have done it differently in the other 13, but we didn't want to have two different mechanisms. So, we tried pretty hard to build that policy, sort of to what you were saying as option two, which was that a state school, a state-mandated school, we'd have all the requirements that the state requires, we'd add on additional things. There's nothing in the state statute that prohibits the board from providing additional authority to a school governance council. Under the state model, school governance councils are entirely advisory. They have absolutely no authority at all. We decided to give them authority, which I don't think conflicts with that. You're certainly not violating your ability to be advisory by also having the ability to make some decisions. You know, if there's some fine-tuning that we need to do, that's fine, but I think largely that's what we attempted to do the first time around.
Bruce? Two other ones. I'm a little confused about two things. The training on how to handle the budget occurring in March, the budget has already been established, so if the training is occurring every year at that time, when exactly are decisions of consequence made vis-à-vis the spending person, the student spending for the particular school? And does it will have any consequence if it's done in March? Now, I understand that there's very little money after other things are required, that are required. The second and last question is, definition of a teacher, a parent, and why does that need to be clarified?
I'll take the second part of the question first. State statute explains that a certified employee could include a teacher or a counselor. We have to be able to clarify that in our language because there was confusion at the school level about who could run and who shouldn't be running. And so, Shipman and Goodwin advised us to just be more clear in our definitions for each. I think the spirit of the school governance council policy was one in which we wanted more people to be part of the process. And unfortunately, one of the unintended consequences of the rollout was that we saw some cases where we didn't see the distribution that we had hoped for. And when we got advice on how to improve the policy, they thought clarity around that piece in particular would be helpful. They also advised us to go to a one-parent-per-household approach so that we could build more folks into the process of school-based decision-making. It was also advised that we have specific and clear language around the state and local officials serving on school governance councils because they already have a stake in the game, and we really need to get parents who are disenfranchised and just not part of the process to be at the table making those decisions. So, that is part of the membership requirement and restrictions. And then, to your point about, Bruce, I'm sorry.
Budget March training.
Right. When we reviewed the timeline, Tom Hamilton and I, we looked at whether we would be better off maintaining the timeline from last year and working with numbers that are less clear, clear at the time but potentially could change considerably, even after decisions have been made, to going as long into the spring as we could, where there is decision-making that can still happen. And so, we thought that that was the way to go. Rather than have governance councils work with a budget that could change considerably from early February to late March, early April, we thought, let's go as long as we can, as long as we know that they would have real decision-making power, but dealing, you know, working with the most up-to-date numbers that we could provide.
I forgot, when is the final reconciliation for your operating budget? What month?
June.
Okay, so March makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to do it by June 30th.
I think the second training's April 4th, and Tom felt confident that that was within time.
Thank you. One thing to address, you're kind of what you're, I think, directing at, Bruce, but I really do want to bring up with Frank, because this has been a problem, is under state law, it's very clear that all the staff have to be certified, and then you have parents at the high school, you have two kids.
Two students.
Non-voting.
Non-voting.
Right.
And there is no role, and then you have a community member, there is no role for non-certified staff. That's under state law, not our choice. And what I've noticed is, there are, probably half our SGCs have non-certified staff that are being snuck in as community members. I don't know if that's what we wanted to do or not, but that definitely needs to be discussed at some point in time because that was not the intent of the policy. That is, some might argue, violating state law, and every year I see that list, you know, makes me wonder.
Mike, if I could just add in, I think that's one of the reasons why, Bruce, we're re-looking at this again as far as policy, and, you know, we're going into year two, but we also had a lot of feedback last summer from many of our school governance members, the chairs, with some concerns and some issues that were brought. That's one of the reasons why we're bringing it back to policy, to re- That's one of the reasons why we're bringing it back to policy, to review and possibly tweak and revise it. But, back to Mike's point also, is we want to get as many parents as possible engaged and active and really be a part of it, of school governance council, and really have a voice in what's going on in their respective schools. But, if I can also look, Frank, this is actually really well done, so thank you for putting this together. Looking at the revisions, what we might possibly be doing as a policy, looking at it, and also looking at future considerations. I think it's key having professional development, and having that on an ongoing basis, and also feedback. Are we, how are we going to look as far as getting feedback from many of the members, including the teachers and parents that are involved, and even the high school level, where we have two representatives? How many of our, both Bryan McMahon and Norwalk High School, I want to make sure that the two students that are involved in each respective school is getting the name out, getting the school governance council name out, as far as, not necessarily a brand, but knowing what's happening in their schools, because I'm not sure if the high school kids really know that actually have a school governance council, how important it is, and how it's really game-changing for each school. So how are we addressing that with the students and getting that out? And also, as far as getting feedback, you know, surveys, I know that we have our annual, not necessarily a retreat, but getting feedback from the members, but if we can do that more on an ongoing basis, I think would be helpful.
I would agree. I think the forum is a great idea, and it's part of the policy, building in some other, you know, benchmark at some point, either mid-year or in the early spring, makes sense.
And getting the high school kids more involved. I know that we have two, but really letting them know what's happening in their schools, and all of us, all 19 schools, but especially those two high schools, because they have two student representatives, and they have a voice.
Ms. Corvus?
Yes, Eric. Thank you. I did just want to piggyback on what Ms. Keys was saying. We actually did have a very robust discussion on this at our last policy meeting with the last formation of the board, Bruce, and the red line that we already have in existence, you know, I'd love for you to take a look at that as well until we get our new committees formed. I was very happy with where we were going with it. One other point that I did want to bring up, we did have a discussion around the facilitation of other opportunities for the school governance councils to get together, to cross-collaborate, to share information, and also that could be another opportunity to get that feedback in a more productive, you know, collaborative manner. So if some school governance councils are experiencing difficulties, and I know we had discussed potentially working that into policy, whether it be adding one additional collective meeting a year, whether it be within the cohorts, or in some other various breakdown, and you know, that is something I'm hoping we can continue to look at and build into the policy as a guideline and a standard, that they, this is what the district is offering beyond just the powwow at the end of the year, which was fantastic and very helpful. But I would like to see us move forward with that as well.
And it's only once a year, so it'd be nice.
Exactly.
And sharing best practices, and having different schools together, which we have, but having it more frequent.
And not to dismiss the fact that there were a number of school governance councils that I spoke with that were doing that on their own, reaching out to other school governance councils and working across school lines on that. But, you know, creating that opportunity for some of the school governance councils that may be at more of the beginning levels, that are still working the kinks, that are, you know, figuring this path, because this is a brand-new adventure for many of them, and it's very exciting. But also, you know, maybe creating some opportunities for mentorship for a school governance council that might be leaps and bounds ahead in their progression and development, to be able to kind of step in and mentor and help us with that professional development as we're going forward with it, because we do have a litany of resources at our fingertips in the school governance councils from members that are active and are really driving this forward with us, so, just my thoughts.
May I ask one more question? Has the development of school governance councils had an impact on the role of the PTOs, the function of the PTOs? And I remember in the 1990s, for two years being a president of Granbury PTO, and a number of things that we dealt with, had to deal with basic education and what was going on in the school. It's something I imagine today would be, under the heading of the school governance council, their responsibilities. Is there been any kind of, I don't know how you say it, negative vibes coming from the PTOs? Because perhaps their role today is a little bit narrower than it was five years ago?
I haven't come across any. The two groups have continued to operate effectively, based upon my experience last year in rolling this out for the first time. But I'm hearing your point, that there may be some things that PTOs may have done previously that the SGCs are involved in, but what I have mostly heard has been that school governance councils are positive about being a part of the change. And seeing a group of parents in particular talking about priority setting, setting learning targets, and having, you know, parents in the community understand what this looks like, I think it creates a shared responsibility, that's a powerful thing in a school district to have.
And Bruce, I would add, when we had this powwow at the end of the school year, and I was one of the board members that was there, there was a lot of, you know, they were at tables, and there was some, I don't want to say heated discussion, but there was a big talk about it. And I think we had thought there were going to be maybe some issues, that, you know, SGCs would pilfer some of the better PTO people and so forth, but the experience, I think, at most of the schools, because it did come up as this topic of discussion, was that there really hadn't been a problem, it had gone more smoothly, and certain people gravitated to PTOs more than the school governance councils and vice versa. So it wasn't, we were surprised, I think positively, that it wasn't a bigger issue.
We were concerned about that when we had some of our meetings, how that would work out or pan out, but we haven't heard any, at least I haven't heard any negative feedback between the two groups.
Point of information, which schools are state mandated, and has it made an impact that we now have school governance councils at them?
I would have, we have two focus schools in the district, Bryan McMahon High School and West Rocks Middle School. I don't know if the focus schools are, would put them in the position of having a required school governance council. We may be off the list entirely, but I can check on that for you. I don't think a focus-level school qualifies you for a mandatory school governance council.
Originally, Bryan McMahon was, you know, if you had your certain subgroups performed dramatically differently than your mainstream.
Under No Child Left Behind.
Under No Child Left Behind, you were. And so I think we did have, did you say eight schools?
Six to seven, I believe it was.
Six to eight, we're around there.
And I know Bryan McMahon was one of them, I know Row 8 School was one of them, and they had school governance councils before.
And do you feel that the school governance council helped address some of the problems and nudged us? Was it a remedy?
I don't think it was, I don't know how you'd measure that.
We've only had them in effect for a year, so.
Right.
One thing, if I could just quickly comment on the PTO versus the SGC, I did have some conversations with folks, and what I did start to see is that the PTO started to form more of a, well, obviously there was a continued effort in fundraising, as a number of the PTOs do a phenomenal job with that. You know, I've been to a number of the events that happened from the PTOs at different schools, most notably Jefferson's Food Truck Event, which is still my favorite, no offense to any of the other schools, but they do a bang-up job. But, in all honesty, I think that, you know, as I've talked with some of the folks that are getting more engaged there, and folks that have existed on PTOs already, you know, I think there seems to be, at least what I've experienced in conversations that I've had, more of a collaboration and a kind of working-together mentality, where one is obviously looking more at the budget and the policy of the school and the vision. And the PTOs also have a really great opportunity, along with the PTOC, to really help support that, whether it be through fundraising, communication, collaboration with different avenues of the school that are already in existence that the PTOs have had their fingers in. So I think that there is a lot of opportunity there for continued collaboration. So, as we continue to develop this, as Mike said, this is year one. So as much as I would love to see us, you know, leaps and bounds beyond where we are, you know, the beautiful thing is watching this grow within the first year, and now having the opportunity, along with my new board members, to really revisit this policy and get an opportunity to tweak it, to increase the effectiveness, and really empower those voiceless parents more and more and more, as we continue to push this policy forward.
Okay.
I got the list. Oh. The ones that were required by the state are Brookside, Kendall, Honus, West Rocks, Norwalk High, Bryan McMahon, and Briggs.
That's right.
Those were mandated.
Those were.
And all the rest, we added in under our policy.
But now we're looking at a different potential.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. For whatever reason, Columbus has had a governance council for years and years, though. I don't know if that was part of their magnet transformation. They had, when I served on governance at Columbus in 2014, there were, there was one teacher on governance who had said she had served on governance 15 years previously when they had had.
Right.
I served at Columbus School Governance Council briefly, and that was a long time ago. They were like one of the first, I think, that really started as a magnet program at Columbus.
Maybe that was something they did on their own, Mike?
Yeah, there are schools that have voluntarily adopted, I mean, Marvin School created one in the 1990s, when my kids were little. So, nobody stopped them from doing it, but this is the first time they've had a policy to require.
Does the policy address the mechanism by which parents are encouraged to, because I know at Columbus, you submitted a letter of intent to the principal, whereas at West Rocks, it's by election?
It's by election.
It's by election, so.
Across the board.
And does that grandfather back to the schools that had already had them voluntarily?
You'd still have to have elections now.
We tried to, Sarah, make it consistent with all 19 schools, so to have the election, all 19 schools operate the same as far as that.
Okay.
I just get a point of clarification, so, Sarah, are you saying that, to your experience, there may have been some schools that did not follow the election?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Because it's been since before.
We've had a couple of schools that have delayed an election from the spring to the fall in order to capture the current crop of new parents in the school, but those have been things that we've talked about.
Anyone else? Okay, then I think the school governance council topic has been addressed.
For now. Back to policy.
Before we move on to residency, unless there's any objection, I'd like to just call up, I'd like to move on action number five, because Alan Lowe is in the middle of events, and his time is valuable. So if we could have him just come up to the podium to discuss phase two, the West Rocks project, so that the board can ask any, can hear just the summary, and board members can ask any questions. I know there were some questions that were being asked in email, so that we can vote to approve, because we have a very tight timeline with the state, and we are going to get some state reimbursement monies on this project, so we really do need to honor that timeline. And so, Alan, please proceed.
Good evening. Last summer, we finished the phase one of West Rock School Window Replacement Project. The project is about $1.5 million. We did the front of the building facing the parking lot, and it takes pretty much a whole summer. We had to do environmental remediation, and then replace it in the window. So the timeframe is very limited, because we only get from like June 20th or so, and we had to finish by like August 15 to 17 or so. So if you're doing school construction, there's a limited timeframe. So we did the phase one last year, and we're looking to do phase one in 2018 summer. So as part of that process, the drawings has been completed, and tonight we are asked to, asking the board to sign off on the general speaking, so we can submit it to the state, and they review it, and then day after, they will approve it for us to go out to bid. So our goal is to go out to bid in January, and go for the city common council for approval at the contractor in February, and then day after, we execute a contract, and then the contractor can order the windows. It takes about two months to order the windows. So we need to kind of meet that schedule in order to have it delivered in, probably July 1st kind of thing, so that we can start doing it. The phase two is bigger than the phase one. Phase one to the front side, which is like one facade and a side of it, the backside is actually more windows. And also, we're going to do the lobby area, when we walk in, there's no kind of vestibule or security kind of area, so we're going to do that as part of this project. So it adds more cost to the projects. So the project for phase two is estimated by $1.9 million. And there are chances that we may not finish the entire project, so we're going to select some area of the building that we can actually work on even when the school is open. So we have to do remediation in the summertime, and then get all the big window area to replace, so we can open school on time. And then maybe little areas that are smaller window or doors that we can replace while schools. So we're looking at all those different strategy and phasing of the project.
Does anyone have any questions? For Mr. Lowe, and for those of you who don't know him, Mr. Lowe is in charge of facilities for the city, and the school buildings are actually owned by the city, and they oversee all projects.
You know, I run for the Board of Ed, so I didn't have to deal with Alan.
Bruce, get away!
Bruce, you keep trying, but you know.
Run, but you can't hide.
Okay, well, if there are no questions, I'd like to proceed to a vote, if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve final plans, project manual and cost estimate for West Rocks Middle School, as stated in the packet.
Mr. Lyons makes a motion, and Mr. Anderson seconds. Okay, so, if those in favor, please put up your hand. It's unanimous.
Thank you, Mike.
You may proceed. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay, now we'll go back to residency. Thank you, Frank, for your patience.
Certainly. So I'll ask that Patty Foley, our Director of School Improvement, come up.
I'm Patty Foley, Director of School Improvement. Welcome to all the new board members, and to the board members that have been with us. I, as a Director of School Improvement, several different areas fall under my responsibilities, but two that I was asked to work on last year, as a residency coordinator, we rewrote residency policy, and then I am the homeless liaison for the State Department, with the State Department of Connecticut, Norwalk's liaison. So I just wanted to give you some statistics that I thought you might be interested in, and to let you know where we are in the process, in terms of last year and this year at this time. So as far as the homeless and displaced, we have, as of, I pulled the figures, as of 11/28, so we have 37 homeless students in our district that are identified in our system. And of that 37, seven are displaced from Puerto Rico. We had nine, but two went back. We have a conference call every Monday with the Department of Emergency Management, with the State Department, with our region, to look at how many kids are coming in from areas that have been hit by storms, and what we can do about it. So, Norwalk really has fared fairly well. We're on the call with OEM person in our health department. We do what we need to do for the kids, they come in, we have placed them, tried to give them a backpack, I had some backpacks from the homeless state coordinator, to get them settled. They can immediately attend school, and then you schedule their physicals and things. So we work with our nurses as well. The anticipation is that there will be more coming, they're doubling the flights that are coming in from Puerto Rico direct into Bradley, starting, I believe there's going to be two a day, starting Friday. They had a whole welcome center, the state had set several different ways to greet the people, but now with the flights coming more regularly, that probably won't happen. But just to give you an idea, we have 1,357 kids from Puerto Rico right now in our state attending schools here. 275 from Hartford, 150-ish in Bridgeport, you know, which makes sense, Merit in about 100, New Britain. So, we could be getting more, but right now we're doing fine. We're able to get the kids in, we have enough room. We don't know if they're going back or not, but, you know, we're educating them why they're here, of course. So, newly registered or registered to the district on or after August 30th is 20, which is important to note, because our June collection, at the end of last year, 2017, was a total of 38. We were under, we had to go through an audit, because we were under identified as far as the state is concerned. We are under identifying homeless students on our population, so they came down and we went through a whole audit. And so, not the good news, not that we're trying to identify, but I think schools are working more closely with us now, we have a little bit better system in place, so we are able to identify kids that are homeless, and why that's important is to offer them the services. So in high school, if you have homeless... So, in high school, if you have homeless students, they, and they are eligible for PSATs or ACTs or college, applying to colleges, that's all free for them. Free and reduced lunch, you know, but it has to all come through my office in order for the kids to, to get those services. So, we're working hard to make sure we're not missing anyone. And then last year, you can see, we ended with 38. Of the 38, 21 students exited from homeless status, which is really important. We meet now regularly, the transportation person, Jean Starkman in data, all the people that have anything to do with identifying. I go through a list, and we make sure that we contact, or we know where each one of those students are at that present time. If they're living in a dwelling that we consider to be more permanent, then they can be taken out of homeless status. If they're left in homeless status through the summer, we're obligated to continue services, which includes transportation. So, it's really important that we really look at where all the students are, and we did a good job with that. 21 kids were exited, some stayed in Norwalk in permanent housing, others in different districts. So, that's, that's basically where we stand with homeless. As far as residency, we wrote a new policy last year, which just really tried to firm up the process a bit. So, right now, our kindergarten students and any new student entering Norwalk has to do a whole residency. They have to pay residency, but that's the only place that we do it. Otherwise, we have to rely on the schools notifying us if they think that someone, you know, moved, we've got some mail back today, and, and, you know, we, we investigate. So, residency approvals this year, handled at Central Office, have been 45. So, really, basically, from the end of August till, till now. So, we're up a little bit with how many are coming through to Central Office, because we're asking all schools to send anyone to us if they're not sure that the documentation that they're getting is correct. The number of investigations we've done right now is 14, and really, that's just been Liz Roberson and myself. We've been able to, we're learning the process better, so we've really been able to make contact with parents and schools to determine, to determine residency. And the total number of students no longer enrolled due to non-residency at this point is seven, which is more than it was last year for the whole year, so. Last year, 117 total came through Central Office. And when I say people coming through Central Office, that's all people who do not have the documentation that schools need, that, that they can easily tell is, is valid. And it's a lot of immigrants coming through that have to get affidavits, and, you know, we have to spend some time with them to, to prove residency. The number of investigations done last year was 25 by Central Office, and three by the private investigator. We haven't had to go to the private investigator yet this year, because actually, we've been able, a couple that were going to go to the private investigator, just by us following through, having them come in and speak with them, they withdrew, so we didn't have to, to go there. Any questions for me? Yes?
Bruce? Yeah, thank you. I have a couple. What is, what doc, well, let me backtrack a little bit. A number of years ago, when this, when this issue was in the news in Norwalk, I was talking to someone in the position, what we call in New York City, a pupil personnel secretary. And I gave her a story from the hour, and when she looked it over, she said, "Well, this is impossible to happen in New York City. It couldn't happen." And I said, "Why?" And it had to do with, what was the differences in the required documentation for either a kindergarten student or a newly enrolled student? I still don't know what the specific differences are in New York, in New York City and here. So, so basically, my question is, if someone enrolls in mid-year or for all kindergarten students, what exactly is required from them to ensure that it's proper residency?
So, we have a chart that many districts follow. It's a lease. If they don't have a lease, it's an affidavit notarized that they live where they say they lived. It's two different utility bills from different columns, or different mail that comes to their home. They can bring in additional documentation to help support them, but standalone, a bank statement, things alone aren't, you know, you can have a bank statement sent.
But what would be the minimum amount of documentation required?
So, if they don't have, well, if they have a lease and two utility bills, that's, that usually is enough. That is enough, because it comes from the columns, the checklist. If they don't have a lease, they have to have a affidavit and a landlord affidavit. They sign an affidavit saying the child lives there, has to be notarized, and the landlord signs an affidavit saying that they do live in the building, and gas and everything's included. You know, we have, we have a lot of different circumstances that come to Central Office, which is why we ask them to come to Central Office. The easy ones the schools can do, you know, they have their lease, they have their utility bills. It's the ones that we have to spend more time with on trying to get different information to show they're living where they're living, because sometimes we have to, they have to, they might have to go PUI bill, because they just came to the country.
Right. Does the kindergarten registration take place in the school and the district?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Well, actually, we started to do it, where's Ralph, at Central Office this year? They would send everything over.
We, we did it this year at Central Office, developed a process and figure out where there were gaps, so we actually had, my, my office did it for this one year. We're moving to online registration.
Right.
That was, the purpose was to figure out exactly what we need to have in place, and how we can develop better processes for an online registration system.
So, there's residency documents, and then there's registration. There's, you know, once they prove residency, then they can bring their registration documents, their birth certificate, transcripts to the school directly.
Thank you.
Sure.
Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Barbas. Just, just to back up what Patty was saying, Bruce, this was another thing that we did cover in the Policy Committee, we did, when we voted on this. I remember the chart that Patty specifically talking about, so perhaps Frank or Patty, if we can get a copy of that policy.
Sure.
Out to all of the board again, just so a refresher for us, for the new board members to see our newly introduced policy, because I remember that chart, and I could not remember it off the top of my head, like you did, which is great.
Yeah, we have a packet.
But that would be fantastic, if you could send that over to us, so we have a better understanding, and, and for myself, it would be a nice little refresher.
Okay.
Thanks.
Super. And, and just to give you a quick insight into the types of investigations, you know, we've gotten leads from different people in the district, and we follow up on that. We've had schools contact us to say, "I don't think they live here," when, when we followed up on that. We have three that, that did not. We, we send a letter, and then they do have an appeal process. We did have one appeal. A high school student appealed, and, and it was denied, so, you know, he's no longer with us, but, you know, he, he admitted, I mean, they moved. So, sometimes the decisions are hard, but we do have a whole process that they can appeal. So, we, we have followed up. And what we often, what we did find about, I don't, I don't have the exact number, but off, off the top of my head, there's about six or seven instances where we did get leads, and after following up, they still did live in Norwalk, just at a different address. They did move, but we found, we found them. So, they're still in Norwalk. They might have had to move high schools.
Julie?
Thanks, Mike. So, you noted, going back to the homeless, the report on the homeless students, you noted that communications increased between Central Office and the schools for some better identification is occurring, but could you comment briefly on what were the, the reasons homeless students had been previously under identified, and if those issues have been resolved?
We're working on it. It's really easy to identify homeless students at shelters, and there's a code for that. So, people are pretty clear on that. And when I first started and took over as the homeless liaison, really, the homeless people, the only homeless people we had identified were shelter kids. Dual doubled up is really tough. Parents, they don't often tell you, they don't want you to know, you have to make the decision whether it's really temporary. It has to be relevant housing, adequate, and stable. There, there's kind of three things, and honestly, it's very subjective. I call the state when I'm really not sure, but it does come down sometimes, so I have to make the decision. I think in the past, most doubled up just weren't considered homeless. They were just given, you know, the address they lived with. But we are getting more families that are very much temporary, living in a situation until they get on their feet. So, we've worked with the school secretaries. I've done two trainings on Professional Development Day, where we've gone through the residency and the homeless policy again, sent out emails reminding them that if they have any confusion about a student, you know, to send it down to us, and we'll take the burden away from them and try to figure it out.
Thank you.
Prior to the implementation of the policy, to my knowledge, we were not disenrolling students, 13, 14, 14, 15. Policy was rolled out at the beginning of last year. We've had about 14 disenrolled students over a two-year period. And, you know, as Patty points out, this would, this number would likely increase if we built in somewhere in the K-12 process, a, kind of a reregistration requirement. So, if we, Patty and I have talked about this. I mean, it's probably, you know, we would look at eighth grade into ninth, or fifth grade into sixth, as the place to insert that, where if you're a student in the system, you need to reregister, as if you were moving to Norwalk for the first time. You know, it's likely that we still have students in the system that are not living in Norwalk. Building that into our current structure would require some additional resources. It would probably also, you know, result in some, some new cases of students living outside of the city.
Heidi, did you have something?
Yeah. Patty, thank you so much for the support.
Sure.
Very, very helpful. And as a policy committee, as Eric had mentioned, we spent some time on this, and I remember going over, having a private investigator. So, there were only three incidents last year so far, so we've only used our PI three times so far.
Correct.
And then this year, this school.
We haven't used him yet, because honestly, the two that we were going to send to him, we resolved, and I really have to count on the schools to get me information. What we're finding is the majority of the people coming through Central Office do live here. You know, there's been about 45, I'd say five. Five don't, and they leave, and they never, you know, they don't come back, but the majority do, are staying with relatives, are living here, and we, you know, we get into, are they homeless, are they?
Right.
Are they kind of in some permanent housing for the time being? Where most of all these kids, only one kindergartner has been, is no longer in the district. The rest were not in any grade level that we recheck residency. It was just from principals calling, or guidance counselors, or somebody saying, you know, "We're getting all this mail back," and then we follow through.
And there was, I know we spoke about during one of our committee meetings, some kind of protocol, so if a staff member in the school notices something that they want to bring to the attention of the principal, then the principal contacts Central Office. Is that correct?
There's a form, so, what, what we ask the schools to do is to investigate it from their end with their social worker. So, if a teacher went to the principal, principal could go to the social worker or the guidance counselor at the school, say, "Can you try to talk to this parent, find out where they live?" Then they write up a form, and it comes down to us.
Okay, so there's ample forms at the schools, at all of our schools?
Yes.
Right?
Yep. Form A, they all know it.
Okay.
And once we get it, and we know that they've done some follow-up, we have something to go on.
Right.
You know, a new phone number, past phone number, the child not taking the bus, mail coming back, those kinds of things.
Okay. Any inconsistencies? But this is great, though, because this, this gives us follow-up from our last meeting.
Right.
What we covered and what we, where we are now, so this is great.
There's still work to do, but the process is much, it's much better this year. Can already tell.
You know, back to Frank, so, Mike, if I could just add one thing. Also, like, from, had you had mentioned, just mentioned, from sixth, you know, going into sixth grade, going into ninth grade, you know, that in between, you know, making sure that these students are actually here.
Some districts.
I think, I think the question is, we had talked about how we would probably need to add staff, and the sixth grade or ninth grade would be the logical places to do it, but that the schools would not have the ability to handle that volume, and that we need to hire someone, or set something up somehow in Central Office. And I, I think that was kind of hanging out there, and that was going to be my question to Patty, is have we made any progress determining, can we do that? How would we do that? What funding would we need to do that?
Well, some districts that I have spoken with are doing it online now. They have an online process, where families just upload their residency documentation. And I know we're going to online with, with kindergarten.
So, we don't check, you know, the documentation and stuff? Do you know, have electronic record?
It doesn't seem, if we go to that online kind of route, I think we could, we could do it. Otherwise, you, you are going to need other staff, because you're going to have all these sixth grade families going in, or ninth grade, and whether they come to Central Office or there to the school.
But at this point, we do not, we're not working on something to have for September 2018.
No.
Have that as the year.
I mean, Frank and I were just recently talking about bringing up the policy and adding, you know, putting it back through the Policy Board and see where we could go with that, but we really, the only way to really get that actual registration residency done is to the Central Office, and we don't have, we're, you know, even with the amount of people we deal with, it's, there's not, there would never be time to take all the sixth graders. And at the schools, I think that would really bog them down, so if we could go to some kind of online system.
Okay.
I know that's what Trumble's doing. They, everyone had to reregister online, they don't have the, they're not the same size.
Yeah.
I know it's, but I know that that was an issue there, so.
Okay.
Fairfield as well, I believe.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Patty, very much.
Thank you, Patty.
Nice to see you. We will now move on to actions. We'll start with the consent calendar. I know if someone did ask, can these be broken up? You can make a motion and have them broken out if you would like. So, the consent actions here, there are three components to it. One is the approval of personnel, which is one of our obligations as a board. Two are budget transfers, which I believe there was some email discussion about. And then third of all was the approval of three field trips. One at a middle school level for class-wide, and then two specific trips at one middle school and one high school. So.
Motion approves the consent calendar.
Okay, motion approved by Mr. Lyons, and seconded by Mr. Meek. Any discussion?
You discussed the consent calendar, or you just asked for something to be removed?
Basically, just asked for something to be removed.
Yeah, okay.
Hearing done. I will proceed to a vote.
All in favor?
All in favor. Thank you. It's unanimous.
It's your first day.
It's unanimous, exactly. Need a little, need a little room to maneuver here. Okay, now, we will move on to approval of memorandum of understanding with the National Federation of Teachers, our, our union bargaining group, regarding increased instructional time. Mr. Lyons, would you like to discuss?
Yes, I'd like to move the adoption of the resolution in the packet, and briefly summarize, we all got a memo from Frank that went into detail on it, but this is a agreement negotiated with the NFT, adopted in a very collegial manner in negotiations with them. It, it allows us to achieve a couple of the objectives of Strategic Operating Plan, which is to increase instructional time. A version that we're voting on tonight gives us the option of making either a district-wide or pilot program initiation of an expansion of the school day by half hour in elementary schools, starting in the 18, 19 school year, subject to the various requirements that we agreed to with the, with the union. We calculated that that additional half-hour day translates into roughly the equivalent of 13 additional days of instructional time during the course of the year for our elementary school students, so that is a big move forward. It also allows us the option of adding a additional day of instruction this year or next year. We do have that additional day in our calendar this year. Of course, we can always adjust the calendar. These optional dates were put in there because we got to make sure that our budgets can cover this, but we believe that we can. The latest information we have from Mr. Hamilton is that we can, we can increase this year to 182 days. I just wanted to mention also. I just wanted to mention also, it's mentioned in passing in the document that's in the packet, the memorandum of understanding, the earlier document, the interim mediated agreement. I just want to mention an additional element that's in that agreement, which has already been approved, allowing for us to initiate a two-hundred-day schedule for year-round schools. With, where you would have four extended breaks during the year of two to four weeks. And again, we specify rate of pay, assignment of teachers, et cetera. And that again, gives us the option, subject to budgetary availability, and also building availability. This is something we might do with the new K-8 schools that we're building, or you could do with an existing school. But it's, it's an excellent step forward. I thank the NFT for good-faith negotiation with us on this. We think this is gonna be a real addition to the strength of our educational program.
Okay. Mr. Meek?
Second the motion.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna do.
Okay.
Hope you have a.
Discussion? Yes, please.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Castan for answering my questions. I appreciate the detailed nature of the response, and I, I know I benefited by it, because I wasn't clear on certain things, especially regarding preparation periods. So that was very unofficial. If you add the extra day, you're talking about fourteen days a year. Now, assuming that apply, the, the additional hours apply to kindergarten also, so you multiply that by six, and you're really now past the half a school year. And that's just the beginning. You multiply it each year.
Mm-hmm.
So this begins to add up over the course of an elementary school career.
Yes.
And pretty soon, with a couple tweaks here and there, I know, I did a back of the, I was, my prior stint on the school board, I did what I guess you would call a back-of-the-envelope analysis to what was going on in New York City and other schools. And at the time, I, it was closer to a year, the additional, some of the additional urban schools had with their hours and programs, and particularly the difference in the June calendar, and how it went, and how the school year was configured. And when you look at it over a course of a six-year career, it was almost an entire year of additional education that other students were receiving in different parts of the country, simply because of the adjustments in the calendar. Those adjustments were always made with a commensurate increase in the pay for pedagogical staff and other staff. That's how we had to do it. And I recall personally, under Mayor Giuliani, who I disagreed with on a variety of issues, when they did some things similar to that, that had to do with lunch duty and a variety of other things, that required teachers to spend a lot more time in a classroom, there was an adjustment in pay, and it was a good negotiation. So I think we'll move that in that direction. It's well worth it, but I think it's, it's going to be costly, but well worth it. And it's something we really will have no choice, because that's how the rest of the world is moving.
Yeah.
Also, the business about, the data on the, the summer lag goes back to the nineteen-seventies. This is, this is an old story. It's beginning to get attention. And it's, I'm, I'm just really thrilled that we're moving in this direction, because we are doing an injustice to students by not making, by not adjusting our schedule to deal with what goes on in the summer. We can, we can do that. We can make real inroads on the achievement, increasing achievement all around, but definitely closing the achievement gap. If we can go to, move to an all, a year-round school schedule, at the same time, really provide quality preschool across the board, we are really going to be a model for school districts around the country. We have to, those are the two nuts we have to crack. If we can do that, there's a lot of evidence that indicates we will be exactly where school districts across the country are striving to get to. And so we're making some good, good, good steps here, and I really appreciate the, the NFT and the board for working this out. It's a great step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else? Okay, could I have a motion?
I have the motion. The motion is made and seconded.
Okay. Could we have a vote?
All in favor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, this unanimously, unanimously approved.
All right.
We, the next topic would be assignment of grievance hearings to negotiations in Personnel Committee. Mr. Lyons is chair, the existing chair of that committee. Could you please review with us?
I'd like to, I'm gonna make the motion, but add some language that was actually suggested today by the NFT. So the motion I would make is resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent schools that the Board of Education approves, the assignment of grievance hearings to the negotiations and personnel committee. The additional language would be, said committee shall notify the remaining board members of any grievance submitted to it for adjudication. That would be my motion.
I'd second the motion and just make a quick comment, that I'm excited to hear that that language has been added. I know that in the past, when we've had grievances moved to the personnel committee, you have communicated, but I really do appreciate that clarification, and I appreciate the NFT's input to help bring that to the table. I know there had been some questions brought up as we've been moving into this process and really seeing that addressed, I do appreciate greatly. So I wholeheartedly second it. Do we have questions?
Could you repeat the last part of the amendment?
Said committee shall notify the remaining board members of any grievance submitted to it for adjudication.
May I speak?
Yes, of course.
Sorry, I had, go ahead.
So if, if a grievance is submitted to the committee, you notify the board?
Correct.
Okay. And then, then the, then the, so we're aware that the grievance is being handled by the committee. When the, when the committee, now here's where I'm just not clear what happens. So the committee comes to a decision, makes a decision. At that point, the board is again notified?
Yes, we've always done that. Anytime that the committee has issued a decision, we always circulate it to the entire board, and then to the, the union that's filed the grievance.
Okay, now, let's say, I create a hypothetical situation here. Okay, so I understand that grievances, we're dealing with, not, we're not dealing with complaints, we're dealing with contracts.
Correct.
Okay? And that's something that's, I think, misunderstood quite often. These are, your lawyers are involved, you're dealing with contract languages, and right and wrong is not being discussed in an absolute sense, but in the sense of how it relates to a contract.
Correct.
Okay? And so, in this hypothetical situation, let's say the committee, by a two-to-one, how many members are on the committee?
Three.
Three members. Two-to-one majority rules against, or, or either way, it doesn't matter.
Yes.
And the, the remainder of the board is notified, and five of six of us decide that the, we're not happy, we think it was, the ruling was contrary to the, to the contract, okay? For whatever reason, okay? What would happen then, if it turns out that a majority of the board had an opinion?
Nothing. If the, if the board had voted to delegate the authority to the committee, then the committee's action would be final on behalf of the board. The unions then would have the option to appeal that decision to arbitration.
Right.
By all the contracts.
Okay, in Connecticut, after, after the committee, it goes to arbitration?
Mm-hmm.
All right? And in Connecticut, it was the arbitration binding, final?
Yes. Typically, I mean, some contracts will go to the state board of mediation arbitration, but a lot of them actually go to the American Arbitration Association. Now, you can, after an arbitration decision has been issued, you can appeal it to the superior court.
Right.
But the courts tend to defer very strongly to arbitrator decisions, so it's a long shot.
Okay. So there are, so my point is then, we delegate the authority to the committee. And as a former chapter leader for four years in New York City who dealt with a number of grievances, I get it, I understand. This, this is complex legally and logistically also, just, just to get things going. So, so let's go back to my hypothetical example. So we do have now, even though there are six members, hypothetically, a majority of the board may have questions or disagree with the decision of the committee, there are two additional steps.
Correct.
And possibly at that step, at that level, another question, is, is there a way for the board to make, the majority of the board to make its feelings felt at that, at that, those subsequent hearings?
Well, I think, once the decision is, oh, you mean at the arbitration hearing?
Yes.
Yes, the board members, I think, would, would have the right as part, as part of the proceeding, if they wish to, to participate in that hearing. You know, typically, we're represented by legal counsel.
Right.
The unions are represented by legal counsel or the employee. And, you know, any board member that wanted to talk to our legal counsel and participate in the appeal process, I would assume would be able to do that.
Fine, okay. And then, and finally, just from my own perspective, I know there's been some discussion on this, and I, I'm, I'm mindful of the distinction of, between complaints, right and wrong, and having to deal with a contract, having been in that position myself. Irrespective of my personal views on an issue, contracts are contracts. And they're basically compendiums of compromises across the board.
True.
And so, you gotta be very careful, who is sitting in the room and who is making the decisions. And what clinched it for me to, to go along with this, this, this approach is, having served on the, in the past, on that very committee, I was somewhat familiar with contracts, with the contracts. And I can't imagine, as a chapter leader, other members of my school, or even on the executive board of our, of our chapter, who are not familiar with the contracts, sitting in and having to weigh in on a variety of, on these grievances. Like I said, contractual language is, is difficult, you're dealing with lawyers, and the lawyers really, if you trust your lawyers, I think, if we trust our lawyers, I think we're basically in good shape. Okay? So that aspect of it, the fact that we're dealing with contracts, the people most familiar with the contracts are generally the folks on the personelling and the negotiating committee. I think that's an appropriate way of handling these grievances, so I would support it. Year or two, if we're, if we find that we're, we have some differences, we can revisit the issue, but I think.
A resolution can be received.
Anytime.
Anytime the board wants.
Anytime. So let's, you know, I, I think it's a good way to approach, and I'd support this.
Okay, Barbara?
Is there any way we could amend the language to be more specific as to a timeframe to be alerted to a grievance and the timeframe to receive a debrief of the decision?
Typically, I send them right out, but we could say something like, within three days or something. I mean, it may not be instantaneous.
There is a timeline, I mean.
Well, there's a timeline in the contract, you know, when, when a, when an appeal comes in, there's a certain number of days before you can have a hearing, and then a certain number of days before you make a decision, that kind of stuff.
I guess I'm.
Which wouldn't be effective. You're talking about.
I'm looking for notification before a hearing.
Well, I think, well, if there's a hearing, you're gonna get notified of that anyway. All hearings are at published, noticed meetings, and our procedure in central office is that all committee meetings that are noticed go out to the whole board, whether they're on the committee or not. So whenever we've had hearings of the negotiations committee, all the board members have been notified of that at least several days in advance.
Perhaps we have a, a problem in the system with the new members being elected, because I didn't receive notification of tomorrow's hearing.
That's because it hasn't gone out yet.
Ah.
It has not gone out yet, because we haven't gotten confirmation from the union that they're going to come.
Can you have a hearing with less than a certain amount of notice?
Twenty-four hours' notice is established under the FLY Act. I didn't want to schedule the meeting and then have the union say they couldn't make it. We're still waiting to hear from the union on whether they're gonna make it.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying.
Excuse me, but you can't have the meeting?
Can I say again?
Isn't it too late to have the meeting tomorrow?
No.
It's Thursday.
Tomorrow would be the day. I mean, you have notice for Thursday meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's Thursday, so we could, we could give notice tomorrow. And if we did, it would go to the entire board.
Got it. Understood.
Okay. So if, I would accept as a friendly amendment, said committee shall notify the remaining board members of any grievance submitted to it for adjudication within three days of receipt? Would that be good? I'll give this to you. I'm writing it down, Tom.
Unless Mike B. is traveling.
Yeah.
The, the decision also has to be posted as well, so you're covered there.
Do the decisions automatically go out to the whole board and all parties?
Yes.
And that's handled by the lawyer?
Contract.
Contracts, exactly.
Okay. There's a strict timeline on that.
Correct.
Three days or five days. Okay, well then, if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, so it's eight to one. No abstentions. Now, we will approve the calendar for calendar year 2018 board meeting dates. I think we need to make some adjustments. Mr. Meek?
Yeah, I, I would make a, a motion to approve the calendar as is, with one exception, that the January 2nd workshop date be moved to January 9th, one week forward. This is the budget, the budget presentation for the full board. I don't know if anyone wants to do this the day after New Year's. It gives staff an additional couple of weeks to, to get us a quality document.
Week.
One week.
Yeah, I think you said, you said weeks.
Oh, well, the reality is, is with a lot of staff out of, on vacation.
A holiday.
The prior week.
Right.
It will be a scramble to get information, so they're actually getting a lot more time between Christmas and.
Good point.
And January 9th.
You know, Meek has got big plans.
So just, just to clarify, Mr. Meek, you said moving the January 2nd to January 9th?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, the following meeting, being January 16th, the full, the business meeting, we will be voting on the budget that night per statute. It has to be done by midnight. We actually get an extra day this year, because MLK Day falls on the 15th, when it would ordinarily be, and since that's a holiday, we get an extra twenty-four hours.
And I do note that November 6th is Election Day. I think we'll just deal with that, close to the date, or?
You know, we have, we've year after year scheduled meetings on Election Day, and then we always change it.
Okay. Do you want to do that now?
Now, so many people are active in election campaigns and stuff. I mean, why don't we just push it?
To a week? November 13th?
Back a week now, and we don't have to take a special vote, because we know what we're gonna do. We do it every year.
Okay, November 13th it is.
So from November 6th to November 13th?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll second the motion as amended.
Okay.
I have a question, related question to what Mr. Meek said. The, there's the, we used to receive, I don't want to do this, but the council was very helpful with folks. We would receive a calendar for the budget timeline. I imagine it's different here.
I, I was gonna mention this in the information and reports section on, on committee announcements. We did, we did cover, we had a, a calendar go out at the last one, but it's not final. It had, it was predicated on fixing this board calendar right now. So now that they have that, I, I'm anticipating at next week's finance committee meeting, as well as getting a glimpse into the budget itself. We should have a better calendar now that they know what they can work backwards from in terms of the night.
Bruce, we do a calendar that has like twenty items on it.
Yeah.
Meeting, running meeting, running meeting, all the way to the end.
You'll, you'll see where the SGC is kind of targeted in that, too, for the, the local school budgets. So I'd expect we'll have that at next week's meeting.
Okay, okay. One second question?
Yes, Mr. Kimmel.
The, sorry. Do the committees have to approve a ca, this, for F O I purposes, do committees approve a calendar also for the next year, so that the public has an idea?
Well, our committees, most of our committees have a schedule, so I forget what they are, but, you know, finance is the next Thursday of every month. Policy is usually before the board meeting, the first board meeting of every month. The former curriculum committee, they would meet, be third, before the second Tuesday of every, second Tuesday, second board meeting of every month. So there is a set schedule, so people know when they are. So, there is a set schedule, so people know when they are. Facilities did move around a while, because we were trying to placate different members with different schedules, that, I think, will be more consistent. And the only committee, I think, that does not meet on a set schedule is negotiations and personnel, and that's, I think, the nature of that committee would lend itself to that.
As needed.
Any other questions?
I'll just point out that finance was a little irregular as well, depending on actions from the state that came out, we did have ad hoc meetings, but we tried, when the committee was formed, we tried to work with all the committee members to figure out the best time, and try to at least forecast out, well, we'll meet these 10, 11 times throughout the year, but sometimes they change based on Hartford, actions there.
Okay, so, all in favor of this adjusted calendar? Looks like we are all in favor, so that's unanimous. And that finishes all of our actions. We will now move on to information reports. Kristin, are you giving us our monthly financial report?
I can give that to you.
As Mr. Hamilton is unfortunately not feeling well and not with us today.
Hi, how are you? I'm Kristin Karsschmidt, here, filling in for Tom Hamilton.
Hi.
And I'm just going to go over the monthly financial tracking summary, which is a year-to-date report, and it's October year-to-date, it was in the board packet. It said November, but really, it was October, because it was too early to send out the November report. So there's nothing extraordinary to really report here, I could just run you through some of our summary categories. Salaries are pretty much on target, benefits are looking a little low, and that's just because we haven't paid out all the retirements, it's not, you know, a straight-line budgeting there, we have some payments to make at the end of the year, and also in January, and we also, as of the year, as of year-to-date October, have not paid out any unemployment at that point, it's just the timing of how the bills come in. For professional fees, this is also timing, this relates to recruiting, legal bills, after-school programs, et cetera, that's looking a little low, but that's also timing, that's also not a straight-lined expense. For property, that's looking a little high as of the point we are in the year, but it's pretty normal, because we do our pre-winter maintenance, and a lot of the spending is related to that. Other services, we, that looks high as of the point we are in the year, and that's just because we pay our transportation bills upfront, because we get a discount with First Student and Relia, we've paid up to that point in time 4.9 million towards the contract. Supplies, we prepay our postage, and, you know, all our other supplies are running on target at this point. Equipment is, looks like it's high, but that's just because we purchased our instructional equipment and software earlier in the year, and the other expenses are dues and memberships, which are paid upfront. One other comment was the sub-budget, although it may be split differently, is pretty much running on target or a little bit below where it typically runs. I know other areas are doing some work on tracking substitutes and absences, and, you know, we're doing some system integrations related to that coming up soon, so we're starting to see some of the effects there. Yeah, there's nothing very much out of the ordinary at this point, unless anyone has any questions.
Thanks, Kristin.
Yep.
We'll have November actuals at the finance committee-
Yep.
Next week. Awesome, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next topic would be review, or it'd be, what do they call it, an initial presentation of the K, pre-K-12 music curriculum, that was approved by the curriculum committee. As I notified the board earlier, we are going to table this for, for the review, and I believe the superintendent would like to be here for the discussion, so this will happen at the December 19th meeting.
Mr. Chair, so do we need to make a formal vote to table the motion, the item?
I don't believe so.
It's not on actions.
Okay.
I do want to mention, and Frank, I meant to email you about this today, but our next board meeting is on the 19th, and that is both Pointcetta and-
Candlelight.
Candlelight. Concert is that night, so I don't know if we wanted to change that board meeting or not, I don't have a kid in high school anymore, but-
Yeah, there's three nights for-
Three nights, you can candle light.
Yeah, you can do it.
But I think, I know, but I think Pointcetta is only that night.
Pointcetta could be one, Candlelight is the night.
I think it's only one night, but anyway, we can discuss that offline, but I just thought I'd mention it. And now we can move on to committees and representative reports, I know we have flushed out all of our committees just yet, but as everyone knows, I left at 6:00 AM the night after our board vote, and I just got back, I had it 11:00 PM, so, really haven't had time to do that again, but I promise that this will be finalized in the next couple of weeks, but for those committees that are currently up and running, I don't know if, Ms. Keys, you have anything on policy?
Yeah, we didn't have our meeting, we had a special meeting in November, a couple weeks ago, we haven't had our meeting this month, because we're still, the makeup of the committee will be decided, I'm sure, very soon, but we will, for our next meeting, we're looking at, usually, policy does meet the first Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month, prior to our regular Board of Ed scheduled meeting, Mr. Barbous had mentioned that, usually about 6 o'clock, an hour before. So, again, we didn't have our meeting this month, we planned to have it for December, I'm sorry, for January, we're looking probably January 2nd, then again, finance, I'm not sure, it'll either be January 2nd or 9th. We've covered in our previous meetings, and I don't want to keep, I don't want to be redundant, but we did discuss school governance council revisions, so we'll be still working on that during our next meeting, as well as Title IX. Prior to our meeting tonight, both Frank and I sat down, and we had an audit of our policies, which we needed to do for quite some time, so that's rather lengthy and long, and we're reviewing it now. We did speak on conference call with a gentleman named Vincent Mustero, who is a senior staff member for CAE, we've got a lot of work ahead as far as policy, and really looking and delving into our policies, and what we need to tweak, what we need to add, what we need to change, and that will be a process, that'll take probably close to a year, I'm sure, to finish that up, but we're also going to be discussing that during our next policy meeting. And that's it for policy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Meek.
Thanks. Finance, I gave you a little bit of a glimpse into next week. Last month's meeting, we did socialize the budget calendar, which was largely predicated on finalizing the board meeting calendar, thank you for doing that, that will help the, the finance team back into some real dates for us to digest, I hope to have those dates at next week's finance committee meeting, along with November actuals, and more exciting is the preview of the budget. So, I don't know how long this meeting can go, I will work with Tom, I know there's some Christmas parties going on that night, so I was going to probably try to move the meeting up a little earlier than the usual 6 o'clock start time, and I hope that can accommodate everyone's schedule who's looking to make that. I will reach out to all of you once I get back with Tom, and, and figure out what, what we need to do for the meeting. So that, and AT redesign committee met today, works going along there, we have a couple of exciting field trips planned out for the committee at various schools, some that are employing a full-blown, a school-wide enrichment model, which is one you've heard Dr. Adamowski talk about, the Rensouli model. So those will be coming up in the next few weeks, and we'll be happy to report back on that. There is some, some idea of timing on, Yvette's here, I'm going to point out to her, correct me if I'm wrong, but hopefully, mid-winter, we'll have a kind of a tenant plan to, to start socializing with you guys. So work continues there, and it's exciting, the next meeting for that is January 9th. Okay? And that's it, thanks.
Okay. On the facilities committee, I do have some very exciting news. I think I'd sent the whole board an email before I went away about kind of some timelines and a bunch of meetings that were taking place, and our team did go up to Hartford for a meeting with what's called DAS, Department of Administrative Services, and they are the gatekeepers, and really determine if you're going, your project's going to, has any hope of getting through and getting its, you know, its state-funded portion. The good news is that DAS will be issuing its list of approved, kind of fast-track project on December 15th, and we expect both, both of our projects to be on that list, so both Ponus and the new Columbus School. It's basically, it's a form of preapproval getting on this list, but it's a big, big step, so that's very exciting. Furthermore, if you recall the plans on the Columbus, the new Columbus School at Ely, way in the back, there are two properties that we want to purchase, and one woman already didn't renew leases with her tenants, because she was planning to put the building on the market, its tenant actually was a church, there has been some rumblings that this church is being evicted, that is not true, the owner, long before we appeared, had decided not to renew that church's lease. The second property is more problematic, it's owned by a group of siblings who are not all on the same page. So, there are going to be some discussions, I think, in this building as to how we're going to proceed with that, but we're just going to have to wait and see. The teams are meeting every Thursday with, with, for each of the school projects, and they've pretty much gone through all the, you know, everything to do with the, what were they called, I can't remember now, the checklist, you know, what we submitted to the state initially, that's all been kind of vetted, and they've really made huge progress, they're, they're really doing very, very well there. There will be a meeting tomorrow night of the Norwalk Facilities Construction Commission, and they really won't be dealing with the two schools, but it will, there'll be one more step of approval for the West Rock's Windows Project. The only kind of bad-ish news, I would say, I have, is they really didn't think through the timeline on this hiring of these electrical engineers, this is for the Fox Run and Cranberry price assessments, and basically, what they decided to do is they put out for bid, and they, they vetted three company, in the end, three companies met their criteria, these companies were chosen, and we can go to them, we can go to put out any, you know, little mini-project, but they will be, these three firms will do all our electric assessment and electric engineering work, so they don't need to get re-approved each single time, but as each job needs to get done, you'll go to these three, and one of them will win it. They've just issued the bids for, you know, they, so they had to vet, they had to choose these three companies, that all took place over the fall, they've now put out the projects, the projects of Fox Run, and the assessments of Fox Run and Cranberry, now those need to be returned, then we need to choose one, then they need to do the work, and then we need to make a plan. Well, I don't know if you can think of the timeline, but by the time this all happens, it will be March, well, guess what? Capital budget will be already basically put to bed for 18, 19 by now. So, they kind of really didn't think this through, so I've told them that, you know, that's not acceptable, and we need to be further along, and, and we're working on that. So, that's the only little hiccup, but they're kind of trying to tell me we can work away, our ways around it, there will also be some discussion, you know, they're pretty gung-ho about getting some work done at Norwalk High School, and so they're working with a representative from their school governance council, kind of looking at what work has to be done from our perspective, kind of mechanically, safety, and then what kind of optional work could be done at the behest of the SGC. So, that's work in progress, there will be, I believe, a facilities committee meeting on the 18th is the plan right now, so, I'm not going two weeks. And I think that's it for facilities. Sped ad hoc, anything to report, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Barbous, not much to report, I'm still in preliminary discussions with Yvette Gorbich, kind of catching up on everything that I'm, you know, that has been going on, where the committee was going. I've had a few, number of sped parents already begin to reach out, some who would like to meet and just say hello, which is very nice, and I'm looking forward to continuing that process. I will let the board know that it is going to be a change from what Dr. Krevikor did as far as the committee day and time, Dr. Krevikor did have a fairly early meeting, I believe it was 5:30 on most occasions, so that will be pushed back to a normal committee timing, more along the lines of a 6:30, 7:00, still finalizing that, and it will be on a Thursday. We are going to have, the week before Christmas, a kind of informal gathering of the current composition of the sped committee, to kind of get together, have me introduce myself, kind of reconnect, and more of a touch-based scenario, so it's not going to be an official big meeting, but more of a kind of a getting-to-know-you session. And also, at that point, I have asked Yvette to reach out to any other potential new members, I would like to see the committee grow a little bit more, you know, have a little bit more diversity as far as the representation there. I think Dr. Krevikor's team was a fantastic team, and I look forward to building upon that as we go forward. That's what I got.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Lyons, I think, we think you've covered everything.
Just getting the language on that resolution. We, we've pretty much cleared the deck on negotiations, we only have one outstanding union contract to go, which is the food service workers, which is currently in mediation, we're trying to schedule a meeting with the mediator, all of the contracts have been signed up. Possibly one grievance coming up, the word I had was that there were some final negotiations at the staff level, and they're hoping they might be able to settle it. If they do, then we won't have to have a meeting.
Great.
If not, then we'll schedule something, and I'll handle that. That's all that's on my agenda now.
Okay, now, the last part, or what's called board member announcements, so, Ms. Gorbich, if you'd like, if you have any announcement you'd like to make?
Anything, by the way, this is, anything you want to talk about, you, you went to a school play-
Now's your time on the stage.
Your kids hit a home run.
You had a conversation with someone in the community that went really well.
Well, I have a 15-month-old, so he didn't hit a homerun.
Yet, not yet.
He said moo this week, in relation to a cow, so I was really happy about that. I will say, some community engagement that I did hear about recently, and this was someone that was commenting on friends of the family in Weston, and that this family has two students in high school, and they are both now choosing to come into the Global Studies Program, and so I was really happy to hear that, and the excitement that this family now has to come into the Norwalk School Program, she had been abroad, or the students had been abroad, and came back home and said, you know what, I can't, I can't go back to where I've been before, my life is different now, and heard about the program here in Norwalk, and so, and now the younger sibling has also decided to make that change. So, I thought that was, that was great news, that we have now surrounding community members who are now interested in choosing to come into Norwalk.
Absolutely. Thank you. Did you, Barbous?
I'm not sure.
No, no, okay. Mike?
Two out of my three kids are engaged now.
[laughing]
James just got engaged, Kristin led the way, so we're rooting for Claire, and getting excited.
Excellent. Mr. Anderson?
I did want to just take this moment, as Mr. Barbous did at the beginning of the meetings, to welcome the new board members and our returning ones, it is great to see you all up here, I'm looking forward to a fantastic two years at least working with all the group of you, so, thank you very much for your participation so far, and I'm looking forward to a real robust two years ahead of us.
Great. I don't think you have anything particular to mention, Mr. Meek?
I have no announcement, thank you.
I do. Julie, that was a great comment, thank you for bringing that up. Lockwood Matthew Mansion had their annual Young Writers Competition, which I try to go to every year, representing the board, several students from Norwalk Public Schools won some great awards, great competition, great writing, and we're going to actually be bringing them in at some point for spotlight, to recognize them, and it's a great partnership that we have with Lockwood Matthew Mansion and Norwalk Public Schools, and it's a beautiful facilities there, so I highly encourage anyone, especially this time of year, to go visit, it's absolutely breathtaking.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Kimmel?
Well, yeah. This is something, this is interesting.
You don't do this at council meetings, this is new.
This is interesting, you know, coincidentally, the students in my Principles of Sociology class at NCC, coincidentally, we were dealing with organizational change today, and so we got into a discussion of the consolidation of the community colleges, and that big issue. And after discussing, discussing it, what I found fascinating is almost, it was almost, I would say just about every student came, came to a position diametrically opposed to what we've been reading in, in the papers, about the faculty and, you know, and autonomy and things like that, they looked at it from the perspective of tuition, what it cost, and who was important to a campus, if it really wasn't, where you could make the cuts, and it was fascinating, and like I said, coincidentally, we were dealing with, with the chapter on organizational change today, I, I found it fascinating, it was a nice experience.
Awesome, thank you. Barbara?
My family attended the fun run this past weekend, and I just wanted to report that it was, again, an excellent event with lots of participants, and special congratulations to Cranberry School for having the highest number of students participating, it's especially helpful right after Thanksgiving. And I just, I love the partnership between the school athletic departments and the city, that we have this wonderful opportunity to then progress on to a free day at the aquarium with popcorn and an IMAX movie, it was a lovely event, and I, I commend everybody for putting that together. Thanks.
Okay. Well, that wraps up our board member announcements, and now we will go on to approval of the minutes. Now, it's kind of a small group of us who were actually here, but November, we have the minutes of November 14th.
Typically, if you're not staying.
If-
I'll move to approve the minutes of the November 21, 2017 meeting.
November 21 and 14, both, or just one?
Sure, we can do them both.
Do both, okay. Second, Ms. Keys?
You have to have separate votes, Tom.
Would you have to have-
Oh, yeah, we probably, because you guys have different attendance. I'll, I'll just make the motion for the 27th.
I'll second it.